Okay, are we starting over from scratch?
No.
Okay. Public hearing. Abe?
Yeah, so this is a public hearing for land use bylaw 1805, land use bylaw amendment, rather, yeah, 1805. And this is land use bylaw to redesignate a highway commercial property from C2 to multiple residential R4. The owners of the property have expressed interest in having long-term rentals, moving from the motel to long-term rental housing. And so, notice of the public hearing was circulated as per our regular processes. We did not receive any comments or concerns from the public, but the public hearing is open in case anybody in attendance wants to speak to it, in favor or against. And I'll just turn it quickly over to our planner, Katie, if she has anything else to say on the bylaw.
So, as Abe mentioned, the proposal is to redesignate bought by Block B Plan 7810399 from Highway Commercial, which is the C2 district, to the multiple residential R4 district in order to allow future development as long-term rentals. Because this is a land use redesignation and not a development application, although the current proposal is to redesignate by, or sorry, to make up the existing building into a multi-unit housing development, by redesignating, an application could come forward and potentially be approved by the development author or the MPC for any use within the district. So this includes things such as seniors housing, apartment buildings, or this multi-unit as proposed. So although you are redesignating lands, you're not approving the development that is proposed. So you must be comfortable with all of the uses within the district. They are all relatively similar and well-suited for this site, being on a, along both a arterial road and a collector road. So with that, if there's no comments from the public, I would recommend approval. But of course, if there's anyone attending tonight that would wish to speak, those comments should be taken into consideration as well. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this?
I miss most of the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Close the public hearing.
Abe? So, we have Jason Toon with the Rocky Mountain Drift Club here to talk to council.
Sorry, foggy throat. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in and speak to you guys this evening. So we are coming upon the time where we need to make plans for Fair Days. We've been to a couple, at least one Fair Day meeting already. And Rocky Mountain Drift Club is proposing again that we'd like to run the event, the street demo during Fair Days. And we would like to present that to you. If there's any concerns or comments towards that, we would like to discuss that tonight with you and see where everybody sits. Based on what we did last year, some time was, is better than later, I guess, is what it comes down to. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to run last year. I think it was a success. We had quite a few participants and quite a few spectators. I think the town supported the event. And if there's anything that we can do differently, we would like to discuss that with you guys tonight and so we can move forward with plans. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Would it be in the same location as you did it last year?
Well, from our perspective, that was a great location. We do, for the drivers, it was, it was good. It was a change, and they enjoyed the layout that we had there. In that location, it allows us to keep the show flowing and moving in a, in an entertaining fashion. We do have to have the cooperation of, especially Bernie, to house the, house the spectators. So we'd like to start that process with him as well. But I think as far as the location goes, it was, it was good for us last year.
Counselor Kettles?
Just thank you for presenting and being early this year. Gives us lots of time to consider. Abe, did we hear anything from any citizens, good, bad, sideways, in favor, not in favor?
Yeah, I think those who attended the event were happy to attend the event. Those, the attendees liked the event. I think anywhere you go in town, the people who live in proximity to the event are going to have you an issue with it. There's some noise concerns there. I'm stating the obvious probably. And so we did get a fair bit of backlash in the office here. And had some conversations with, with some residents in the area.
Were those questions?
Counselor Kettles?
Was that before the event when we were trying to make it shift the event? Or was that after the event that you continued to get a bunch of complaints about how bad it was?
Okay, so following the event, we didn't get any comments. But once council held a special meeting, made a decision to relocate, that's when we got concerns from residents in the area.
I'm going to agree with that statement. I did get phone calls and emails before the event, and I asked them to get ahold of me after the event to tell me what actually happened. And I did not receive any further court respondents, so. But as far as I could tell, I could hear it from my home. Your times were good. You were fairly quiet, actually. And you stayed within all the guidelines and parameters that we had hoped you would, so.
So we try really hard, not only from an insurance perspective, but from the town. We want to keep everybody happy, and we really do do our best to try and do that when we, when we run.
Counselor Kettles?
From the Ball Diamonds perspective, it worked out great with all the ball players that were there. They got, it was, it was a great location for that aspect. It got a, the crowd was huge. It was.
We really enjoyed watching the whole wave come over from the ball.
Right, yeah. And it was awesome.
Counselor Kettles?
I guess my only comment, and I thought it was a safer location than, than previous. I guess we're all thinking about what can happen in crowded venues this week. And, and I would encourage your organization to put some thought through as to, I don't know what that looks like, barriers from the street or, or something like that. It's funny, I, I find myself less concerned with the actual activity and more concerned with what could be coming at them from the street.
Yeah.
So I would ask your organization to spend some time giving some thoughts to what that flow control might look like.
For sure. We did learn a couple things. Because it was a new location, we hadn't ran there before. We hadn't had crowd control of that space before. We are going to make some adjustments to the crowd, move them back a little bit, and put the music in another spot. We can change the layout a little bit so there isn't so much pressure on certain spots. But, and, and our insurance company definitely looks at all that stuff. And we're in the process right now with the insurance company. I'm sure they'll have some things that they want to, to talk about. They do every year. But yeah, I thank you for the comment. We certainly want to keep, safety is our priority for both the drivers and the spectators. We, we think about that a lot when we, when we run these programs, so.
Counselor Zimmer?
Yeah, that was a thing too last year with the safety stuff. I attended the Drift Demo there last year and was very impressed with how things were set up, where they had their barrier there. The ground crew, kudos to the ground crew. And some people always want to try to move closer. Your guys would be moving them back, so they had a lot of people moving around there, trying to keep everybody as safe as you can. So I thought it was very well-run. The flow was good. Having it that way too, it keeps it, you're not waiting for the next one. It's a continual nice thing. And yeah, I thought it was very well, very well-run last year.
Thank you. The staff that we have that help out to take this very serious, so. Safety is an issue.
Thank you very much. Jason? Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Action items. Bylaw 1800, Traffic and Highways, Second and Third Reading. Abe?
So this is the second reading of the Traffic and Highways Bylaw 1800. It consolidates, as discussed last council meeting, it consolidates a couple previous bylaws to just make it easier to follow, and brings all the changes, the various changes that have happened to that bylaw into one bylaw. Additionally, it does the most substantive change, is it amends the school, school zones and playground zones in town to have a speed limit of 30 kilometers an hour with the effective time of 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year-round. So that is on the agenda for Second and Third Reading this evening.
Any questions, concerns? Counselor Kettles?
I was just wondering if we'd had any feedback on these changes from RCMP, from Livingston Range School Division, anything of that nature?
So we, we reached out, we haven't had any feedback from, since first reading. But before we did first reading, prepared first reading of the amended bylaw, we connected with the school division, both the high school and the elementary school. Both of them were in favor of these changes. We hadn't proposed the 24-hour at that point, but I'm, they were in favor of widening, expanding the, the time period. So I'm sure they'd be thrilled with a 24-hour. And the initial changes did come from, as a suggestion from the RCMP. They were having difficulties enforcing the speed zones. It wasn't clear in our bylaws. And so if you recall, there was no playground zone. So what we did was we would default to the Traffic Safety Act and what it said in the, in the playgrounds on the Traffic Safety Act. Well, now we have those provisions covered in the bylaw, so it should be very clear. We haven't had any feedback after first reading, but that's some of the background work that we did before we amended the bylaw.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Can I have a motion to approve second reading, please? Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1800, the Traffic and Highways Bylaw, Second Reading.
All in favor? Approved.
I'll make motion for third reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Maister to give bylaw number 1800, the Traffic and Highways Bylaw, Third and Final Reading.
All in favor? Approved.
We'll be working on a education initiative. We're working on that right now, ensuring proper signage of all the zones, et cetera, so.
Moving on. Bylaw 1804, procedural bylaw. Abe?
So this is second, third reading of the procedural bylaw. Primary amendment that we've made here is to allow the public to attend public hearings electronically. This was a legislative change in the MGA that required municipalities to provide this provision. We didn't have it in our existing procedural bylaw, and so we included that in the bylaw. There was a concern from council at the last meeting about having long queues and vetting people, vetting members of the public who wanted to attend remotely. So we did look for other processes from other municipalities and inquired with a couple. We, we couldn't find any. This is a fairly new process. So we just plan when the public calls, they do need to call to let us know they want to attend, and we'll have conversations with them and, and manage it, as this is a fairly new change. We feel good that we can manage it, and if we need to have some amendments and processes, we'll, we'll definitely be bringing that back, so.
Any other questions, concerns? Can I have a motion to approve second reading, please?
Motion.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1804, the procedural bylaw, Second Reading.
All in favor? Approved. Motion for third reading.
I can do that.
Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1804, the procedural bylaw, Third and Final Reading.
All in favor? Bylaw 1805, Lub Amendment, Second and Third Reading. Abe?
So this is second and third reading of the land use bylaw that we just held the public hearing for. There were no comments from the public in regards to this land use bylaw amendment.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Kettles makes the second reading. Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1805, a land use bylaw amendment, Second Reading.
All in favor? Approved. Third reading? Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to give bylaw number 1805, a land use bylaw amendment, Third and Final Reading.
All in favor? Bylaw 1806, 2025 Property Tax Rate Bylaw. Abe?
So this is first reading of the property tax rate, the 2025 Property Tax Rate Bylaw, and we have our Director of Corporate Services here, Jen Place, and she will review this bylaw with you, counsel.
So I have bylaw 1806 here in front of you. So this is for the annual property tax rates. As you know, the municipality is required to pass these annual rates through the Municipal Government Act, and these will be based on the 2024 property assessed values as of December 31st. The town also has included in the bylaw annexed lands within the MD of Little Creek, and there's agreements in place for those. So those tax rates that they adopted on April 9th have also been included within the bylaw. So within the 2025 budget, which was adopted at the last meeting, a final budget, there is a tax revenue increase of 6.17% or 200, just over $239,000 over the 2024 budget. There are few contributing factors to that which council is aware of, such as inflation and a loss of some operating fund, grant funding that offsets some programs and staffing for economic development in FCSS. So those were some of the bigger impacts to the 2025 budget. In addition to an increase to the budget, the assessed property values have also increased from previous years, so that's due to inflation and market values as well as growth that's taken place, both on the residential and commercial side. So the residential assessment increased by about 14.8% and 5.3% for non-residential. So this helps to decrease the actual tax rates, municipal portion of the tax rates as assessments goes up, and you're, you're sort of balancing the numbers there to get what you need to for budget purposes. Within the tax rate bylaw as well, or actually, before I get to that, I'll just speak to, the Audit and Finance Committee did meet and review some tax rate options. Administration brought forward three options at the, I can't remember the date of the meeting, sorry, but at the last meeting. And council, or pardon me, the committee has proposed one of the options for the bylaw. So this option was a even decrease to both the non-residential and residential rate, but because of where the rates sit, it's a little bit higher percentage decrease on the residential side. But there's also a lot more assessment to collect from on that side as well. We also have in here the requisitions for the Alberta School Foundation, as well as the Porcupine Hills Lodge, and some designated industrial property which are provincially, these are all provincially assessed and brought forward. And the town and council has no control over these amounts and is required to collect on behalf of these organizations and, and pay them back. So they too are included within the bylaw. The education requisition was up by 15% over 2024, so that's $218,000. So there's a, with the assessment inflation and growth, there is a 1% decrease on the residential side and a 1.6% increase on the non-residential side for these requisition portions. So with, the bylaw has been included for council's review. As mentioned, all of the rates and the totals that need to be collected for the Alberta School Foundation, Porcupine Hills, DIP, and the taxes have been included within the bylaw with the rates. Sorry if that was a lot of information in a very short amount of time.
Thank you. Questions? Concerns? Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Could I have a motion to move bylaw 1806? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1806, the 2025 Property Tax Rate Bylaw, First Reading.
All in favor? Approved. 7. B Provincial Government Correspondents, Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, response to letters.
So council directed administration a couple meetings ago to draft a couple of letters to provincial ministers. One was regarding the Provincial Priorities Act, and the other one was regarding the increases to the education requisition that was just briefly mentioned. And so we did circulate several ministers with the provincial government and received a response back from Minister MacIver to both of those. Regarding the request from council and the Alberta School Fund, Foundation Fund, the request from council was, we need to know where these, we would like to know where these increased tax dollars are going. And the response from the provincial government is that they go to a general pool, not in the education, rather, a general pool in the Education Department or Ministry, not necessarily allotted back to the town of Clarison. So regarding the Provincial Priorities Act, council did ask for the minister to visit and discuss regarding the Provincial Priorities Act and red tape reduction in particular, and how there's included reporting processes with the Provincial Priorities Act. And they will not, they declined the invitation to, to meet with council.
Take that for information. 7. C Point 1, Asset Retirement Obligation Policy. Request for decision. Abe?
So this policy has come to council on the heels of the financial audit. This was recommended by the auditors. It's a policy that we don't currently have. And so I'll turn it over to our Director of Corporate Services to review the policy.
We should move the mic over to that table.
No, I think you'll start talking.
So I'll just turn it over to our Director of Corporate Services to review the policy with council.
Thank you. So as Abe mentioned, when we were doing the 2024 financial year-end audit, the auditors made a recommendation that we adopt an asset, or asset retirement obligation policy. So this comes down from the Public Sector Accounting Board. They established PSAB 3280 for asset retirement obligations for fiscal years beginning on or after April 1st, 2022. So what the legislation establishes is an accounting standard that recognizes measures and reports on AROs, or asset retirements, for public sector entities. And it is a legal obligation to retire these assets in a safe and environmentally responsible manner when they're no longer in use. So the standard is meant to promote transparency and accountability by ensuring that the financial implications are recorded within the financial statements. So the town has been following the standards. We have reported it on our financials, so we have met the requirement. But we didn't have a policy in place for administration that established more the governance around that. So the auditors actually were kind enough to send over a bit of a draft for us to work with. So we developed the attached policy 3.2.20 under their advice for council consideration and approval.
Questions? Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt policy number 3.2.20, the asset retirement obligation policy as presented, effective April 28th, 2025.
All in favor? 7. C Point 2, Arena Solar RFP.
So, council directed administration to go through our request for proposal process for a solar project on the arena. And so we went through that process. We received 15 submissions, and we judged the, included the criteria here for your information on how we judge the proposals. A few members of staff, including myself and Director of Corporate Services, reviewed the proposals. Additionally, we hired a consultant to assist us with reviewing. They did an independent review of the proposals and provided their findings to us as well. And so that has helped inform this request for decision. They also performed a feasibility study of putting solar on the arena, and their finding was that we are located in a great area and that putting solar on the arena is a feasible So we'll summarize the, there's two main groups of proposals that we received. One would be classified as a large micro-generation project. The other would be classified as a small micro-generation project. Large micro-generation projects are over 150 kilowatts. We've highlighted the strongest proposals from both categories for you. In the large micro-generation systems, International Renewable Energy Systems and Empower Energy Corp. were the two strongest, and they both have electric. And they both have electricity offsets of at least 100% for the usage at the arena, ranging from 420 to 516,000 dollars. For those, we've provided the estimated payback years for those projects and where we have the information, the annual savings. The smaller microgen projects, we have three strong, three other strong proposals here for your consideration. Those come from DECOM, Alta Pro, and RMSC. They don't get us to the complete electricity offset, although one of them gets us close, around 92%, possibly a little better. Another at 70% electricity offset, and another at 52% electricity offset. We are recommending that council goes with the smaller project because smaller microgen projects are eligible for what's called a solar club, which is basically a premium that solar projects or solar arrays can collect on the solar that they sell back to the grid. And it's pretty significant. And so as you see, the estimated payback years are much less with these projects because of that premium. And the annual savings are much larger as well. And so potentially completely offset the town's electricity bills and consumption. The costs, by the credits we get back, potentially offset the total costs for electric at the arena. Where council lands with these, again, they're all three strong proposals. Where council lands, I think, depends on how far it wants to go with the offset and its appetite for spending. As you look up, it costs more money to get more electricity offset. However, over the life of those projects, the more expensive project will yield more benefits. Council also doesn't have to approve a project this evening. We do have the ability to not proceed with the projects, as we did indicate that on the proposal. These payback periods also, it should be noted, there is currently funding, provincial funding for these projects and whereby you could potentially offset a solar project, the cost of it by 30%. So these costs have not actually factored into, factored that potential grant funding in. There is still grant funding available, I was told today. And so potentially, you can take 30% off of these costs and then your payback period is reduced as well. So the RFP did state that this project would only proceed because we didn't know if there was funding. And that was part of, a big part of the initial conversation, that if we're not successful with the funding, we can cancel the project as well. So if council chooses a project, the next step would be to actually get a structural assessment, an engineering assessment of the roof at the arena. That is required for the application, the grant application. And we will proceed with that. And if council didn't want to proceed, unless we got the funding, we would wait in here back. And if the funding wasn't approved, council didn't want to proceed, we'd be able to cancel it. However, council can still proceed regardless, even if there is no funding with the project. In the scenario where we got the engineering assessment and did not get the grant funding and council canceled, the project, you would be on the hook. We would be on the hook for that engineering assessment. So just some information for you on that. I'll stop talking. Just trying to cover all the information.
Questions? Concerns? Conversation? Councilor Kettles?
I'd like to thank administration for chasing this down. This is never easy to crunch, these numbers. My initial thought is that we're pretty pragmatic, council, and we haven't done a great number of renewable initiatives in our term. I think this is an opportunity for us to move a little bit down that path, but again, in a very pragmatic way. We look at 10-year paybacks. We look at something that's going to specifically, you know, reduce our overall costs over time. A structural assessment of the arena roof is not a bad thing either way. I guess I would speak fairly strongly in favor of proceeding down this path.
Councilor Cutler?
I concur. I think it's a great opportunity to enhance what we have. If we get 30% coverage from grants, cuts it down. We got the money in the reserves. We need to look at the roof anyhow. So I'm all in favor of just going ahead with it myself as well, with one of the lower, what'd you call it, microgeneration project of DECOM.
I should note that there will be some, most likely be some debenture to support this. That's not factored into this payback period. This is assuming cash is paid. So your payback might be a little bit more once you factor in the interest that you're going to pay on the debenture. But not, nothing I would be overly concerned about. It's just, yeah, payback is just a touch longer probably.
But the 30% isn't factored in either, so.
Yep.
Yin yang.
Yep.
Councilor Carlson?
I'd move.
To where?
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? So we have a motion made up there to award the Clarisone Arena Solar Project Two in the amount of pending MCC.
Do you want to make the motion?
I can do.
And there's two, there's two possible motions. You can proceed with the project, whether or not we get the funding, or you can proceed pending grant approval.
That's number one, right?
Yeah.
And I think that's where I'm comfortable with. I think we'd have to, if we didn't get the funding, we'd have to just do a bit of a rethink. But I'm prepared to move that we award the Clarisone Arena Solar Project to DECOM. My rationale there is though it's a bit expensive. It provides us with the most annual savings and after the initial cost of the project is covered, I think the most annual savings moving forward. So that's my recommendation, is awarding it to DECOM.
Questions? Cutler?
I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I wish it didn't read that we were waiting on whether the grant funding went through. I think we should just follow through with it on a no matter what basis. It's something we're looking into. It's something we want to do. We've got the money. I think it's something we should move forward with without the hesitation. All that does is backlog more paperwork.
We do have a.
And I'm prepared to.
Take that friendly.
Take that as a friendly amendment. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Concerns? Councilor Kettles?
Are you taking that out or leaving it in? Are you saying it's a friendly amendment?
Yeah, so I think that moves me down to option two.
Two. Question?
Moved by Councilor Kettles to award the Clarisone Arena Solar Project to DECOM in the amount of $513,498.
All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Okay. But we're still going to apply for.
Yes.
No, we're not.
No.
Got to look for that free money, right Greg?
Well, we just wanted to spend it.
Spend it, move it.
Okay. Seven point D, Financial Report, March 2025. Jen?
Hi, thank you. So I have the financial report as of March 31st, 2025. The first is the income statement by function or department. I did highlight again the tax and requisition revenue because it looks a little different from the last report. We do still have total revenues in there from penalties and interest earned on the general bank account, as well as investments that have been cashed, and franchise fees for January through to March. However, the way the budget is set up, we also had our first school requisition payment. So that kind of offset those until we send out our tax notices and start revenue, generating that revenue. So once the notices are sent out in May, that'll look a lot different, but if you did notice a reduction there, that is the reason why. So I wanted to just highlight that. As well, I couldn't remember if I spoke to this at a previous meeting, but the bylaw enforcement, looks like there's a significant revenue earned there. This is due to a late 2024 cleanup, if council recalls, that was invoiced in 2025. So it's just a timing, a matter of timing of when the cleanup occurred and when we got the information to invoice, which was in 2025. The common equipment pool revenues also look somewhat high for this time of year. This was due to the town assisting with a water break and then invoicing back for materials, labor, and any contracted resources that were required to fix that water break. So I also commented under number five that the expenditures appear a bit higher there. Some of that would be from this water break. Majority of that is due to the insurance premium we paid. So the full amount is there instead of being broken out over a 12-month period because it's paid upfront, of course. The 2025 provincial policing requisition was received and has been paid for the year. I guess it's actually, their year is April, so a little bit of 2024, but we paid in 2025. And then I just, for overall expenditures, aside from what I mentioned on the common services portion, everything looks to be well within range for the first quarter of the year. Summer positions are going to be getting filled here in the next couple of weeks, both at the museum and public works. So we'll see some increases there, as well as all the maintenance activities that generally take place over the summer months. So the next four or five month period, we're going to really start seeing things escalate a little bit through the summer. Looking at the income statement by object, so this is more by sources, again, under the net municipal taxes, which I've highlighted as number one, that has to do with the school requisition. Number two, which is the penalties and cost of taxes. So I've just reiterated there that we've only collected the January tax penalties to date. So our next set of penalties aren't issued until July 1, following the June 30th due date. And then there's a little bit in there from utilities. Overall revenues as of March 31st include items such as, we've received some community events donations, municipal revenue for items such as scrap metal recycling, some SCSS grant funding, and of course, fire services response fees that we've collected to date. Number four speaks to contracted general services. So the majority of these costs are related to contracted services and agreements that the town has. So there's some annual renewals that have come due, such as insurance, as I mentioned. Provincial policing are included in there. That's why it's indicating that we're already 40% spent on the budget. But again, these things aren't, are paid now and not distributed throughout the full 12 months. Number five, which is the transfer to organizations, so this is mostly community grant funding, which has been issued for the first quarter, including annual funding for, from SCSS to support their various community groups that they look after. And then I just wanted to highlight under capital expenditures, you know, we've incurred some cost to community centers, a big one. That renovation is complete. So we do have, I think, a holdback and maybe one more payment still to issue there, which you'll see in the next report. Our machinery and equipment purchases, we've had some engineering on some of the larger infrastructure projects. We've had some costs there. We also, I did include it on here, put a deposit down on some Centennial Park playground equipment. So that's included in there as well. So those are the costs to date.
Perfect. Questions? Discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consolidated income statement for March of 2025 as presented.
Counselor Zimmer, thank you. Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept this consolidated statement of operations for the month ended March 31st, 2025 as presented.
All in favor? Okay. Information brief. Seven point E, point one, Communications Utility Newsletter. Abe?
So.
Jen?
So following the presentation of the community communication survey at the April 14th meeting, administration reviewed some other potential strategies to enhance the way information is shared with the community. So one of the responses indicated a strong preference for receiving more information through a newsletter or email format. With that, administration discussed putting together a utility newsletter that goes out with the utility notices. There's a wide distribution there. We're already sending out the utility bills. It hits every resident and business that has a utility account, which is everybody. So we thought it was, just had really good reach. So I decided to take the lead on this, so if you don't like it, please be gentle. But I included a copy of the newsletter. We just came up with the name, the 60-day scoop, because it's going, the, pardon me, the residential bills are bi-monthly. So it'd also go out with every other commercial bill. There is the first May-June newsletter. We're trying to include, well, we did an introduction to the newsletter in this one. Spring cleanup is coming, so we're trying to include all the relevant information, events that are upcoming, anything that may impact the general public. So there it is. So I guess we're just looking, you know, for, council's okay on this? If you're happy with it? I don't know that we put in a resolution or need a motion, but just to get some feedback.
Looks good.
Comments?
Mike was saying how much he liked this Clarisone Museum bit in the corner there. Speak of that, coming up.
I think it's fabulous.
Yes.
I really do. This is what we've heard about a coffee with council. More information, different ways of communicating with citizens. So this fits a bill perfectly. Thank you, Jen.
Good bill.
Thank you.
I like the layout. Fantastic. I like the background. Beautiful.
Does this go out electronically with our electronic bill people and then physically with those that are still receiving a physical bill? That's all that's.
It'll be an attached PDF with the utility bills. And actually, Jason and I were talking about it. And he's actually going to put a notice on the utility, or sorry, right in the body of the email. We're going to say, please open the attached newsletter.
Nice, thank you.
Can we get the track if they open it?
Unfortunately, no. I don't think so. But now we can tell people where to go for information, or where to find it.
Leave them alone.
Yeah, leave them alone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. Appreciate your work.
No, not that talented. Not that articulate.
Okay, moving on. Seven point E, point two, Spring Festival Museum Grand Opening. Abe?
So, so speaking of the museum. So there is a grand opening spring festival for the museum, May 24th.
So, there is a grand opening, Spring Festival for the museum, May 24th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at the Claris Home District Museum. So, basically, this is just info brief to let Council know that there is a big event happening. The Tourism Information Center is also out of the museum, and so, we're doing some special initiatives. They've received, they've received feedback over the years of people passing through, wanting to buy kind of Claris Home branded products. And so, that will be a focus of the new, of the new shop in there. I'll try to cover a few of the highlights here. Yeah, so the new gift shop will feature vibrant collection of Claris Home themed merchandise, including town branded swag, custom designed mugs, coloring books, and kids' clothing. And so, we'll be showcasing the talents of local artisans, whose products align with the museum's charm and heritage. And so, again, scented candles, handcrafted patchwork quilts by local quilters, Claris Home inspired coffee blends, original prints and artwork, alberithine merchandise. And so, there have been requests from passersby over the years to have some of these products, so they'll start stocking that. They're bringing in old fashioned candy section and with a wide selection of glass bottled sodas as well. So, trying to bring in younger, younger kids.
And older kids.
And older kids, yes.
Dude, I remember going to the museum-
Like, no kidding, right?
-to get the, the hard candy sticks.
No kidding.
That's our 10 cents. You go down there, we go down there, it was 50 cents. We sit there all day.
Now you get two.
I'm going to go sit on the porch with these candies and my fizzy pop.
Great, nice.
So, this is an initiative that the museum staff and board have been working with the engagement coordinator on. And so, really trying to raise awareness that the space is more than a museum. It's a welcoming stop for travelers and a resource hub. They are also going to be promoting local, the tourism, the local tourism industry through there as well. And so, stay and play, think of the stay and play, promoting stay and play initiatives, promoting restaurants, local shopping, et cetera. And so, basically, just inviting Council and the community out to this event for an actual ribbon cutting ceremony as well. So, again, that's May 24th, Saturday, May 24th at 11:00 AM.
I might. I probably won't be cutting the ribbon, but I might cook for you. But it'll be fun. The slogan that we've decided is to help put the fun in fundraising, because this is the kickoff for fundraising for our new building as well. So, barbecue and games and entertainment, it's going to be a fun day. Hope the weather cooperates, because last year it didn't with all of our events.
May 24th, what could go wrong?
Snow.
No.
Yeah.
Target.
So, this is just an official invite to Council to come in. Yeah. See the hidden gem that is our museum.
Perfect. Look forward to it. Alrighty. Moving on. 7. F, CAO Report. Abe?
So, just updating on some of the activities from Administration over the last month. I think there's some pictures in here, whether it's renovations at the museum.
Worked really good. Worked really good.
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody going in and out of it all night. There wasn't a backup. It was just a lot, it was great. And a great volunteer supper put on by SCSS.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Abe?
Yeah, anything, your questions, your comments?
When's the new equipment coming?
Where'd the old equipment go?
Okay. Take that for information.
We don't get answers to either of those?
Nope.
Did you pay back?
Yeah.
On its way?
It's just come home.
In the mail.
In the mail.
Council Committee Report.
Great job, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We were really busy this month.
I just wanted to add to it. Saturday, we, my wife and I attended the temple groundbreaking in Leftbridge, and I didn't know what to expect. I couldn't believe how many people were there. It shocked me. It was like, this is a very big deal. There's four temples, this will be the fourth temple in Alberta. It's 45,000 square feet. It's pretty big. So, yeah, we enjoyed it. Who's who was there, so I'm glad I went.
Thank you for representing us, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Councilor Resolution Status. Anything there we want to talk about, discuss?
We keep talking, updating and adding on to it. We never do.
Should come up with something.
Do we resolve to come up with something? Is that how that works?
It seems like it never makes it to this. Okay, Information Items. Any questions, concerns? Can I have a motion to accept the information items? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Opposed?
I was in favor.
Could I have a motion to go in camera, please?
Motion to go in camera.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to go in camera at 8:00 PM for the following items. A, business interests of a third party for Section 16. B, business interests of a third party for Section 16.
All in favor? Approved. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks.